You're listening to Sarah Talk. It's political.
You could run a fucking pet Brock against Donald Trump and I would vote for the pet Brock.
Yeah.
That's where we're at.
Yeah.
One of the things that drives me nuts as an atheist is that my polling location is at a church. And I don't, I don't necessarily have a problem. I'm not gonna like burst into flames walking into a church.
Now, after being on this show and having heard your viewpoints on some things, my advice to you is, don't test this, I won't burst into flames.
And positively LGBT positive.
In many states, you can still be evicted from housing simply for being gay or transgender. Stand and fight with us.
Oh, and occasionally completely absurd.
I don't know if you've ever seen the lightning bug when he flies around with a flame, a light coming out of his behind. The lightning bug got a flame coming out of his butt.
Oh, it's a beautiful night tonight. All the sodomites are out.
And now, from Orlando, Florida, your host, Sarah Austin.
Holy Jesus, welcome to Sarah Talk finally.
What the hell?
22 minutes late. I'm sorry, y'all.
Yikes.
So, um, nobody likes to hear when you talk about your technology problems, but uh, so the program we stream with, XSplit Broadcaster, decided it was gonna update itself today. And there's something with the Facebook streaming thing that makes it not work anymore. And I didn't have time to troubleshoot it five minutes to show. So we tried a number of other things and now finally we put it on YouTube.
Mm-hmm. Which is gonna be so confusing for me.
It is. We're so not used to this. And Becca's in the corner. We moved Becca into the corner tonight.
That was bad girl day.
Uh, not, not because of that, because we have a guest in the studio this week. Um, our guest this week is a unique candidate for our local school board. And sometimes I worry that like these hyper local shows are, might turn some of our national, international audience off. But, but my hope is that you walk away from these kinds of conversations, uh, you know, specifically this, looking at your own school board. Maybe in a different light and getting more involved. And so, uh, so that's my hope for those of you who are not here local. Uh, Kayla Tetter is in studio with us tonight. Kayla is a recent high school graduate who believes that having someone on the school board who is very close to the student experience, gives voice and advocacy to the students themselves and brings a perspective that traditional school board members probably don't have. And I couldn't agree more. She's also an accredited legal professional. Well done. And a member of the Florida Law Honor Society. Uh, we met at Polk Pride this year and, um, and we talked to another one or two candidates. I don't remember how many.
Uh, I think we talked to one other.
But Kayla, Kayla really stood out to me, so I wanted to put together a full interview.
Yeah.
So all of that, Kayla, welcome to Sarah Talk. Thank you for coming out here and fighting through the technology problems with me.
Thank you and glad to be here. It was worth the, the wait for the technology.
So we met at Pride in June. How have things been going?
Stressful, in a word.
Yeah?
It's been insane in a number of ways. And, and not only just because of the campaign, but also because on the side, I'm trying to enroll in my, uh, first full-time semester at Polk State College. And last full-time semester at Polk State College.
Yeah, that's a lot. It's a lot on your plate. So what made you get interested in politics kind of broadly in the first place?
Well, to be quite honest, I've always kind of been interested in it since the very beginning. I remember when I was about eight years old, uh, Obama was just elected. And we were all taken into the gathering hall of our school to watch the presidential inauguration. And you know, I'm looking up at the screen, then I look around at, you know, the students around me and I realize everyone is asleep. And they're missing out on this historic moment. And I said to myself then, you know, I wanna be there one day to see that in person. And you know, I went home to my, my parents. I started to talk with especially my dad about, you know, politics and current events. He was always very vocal about his opinions when he watched the news. So it was kind of just a natural.
As dads can be.
Yeah, dads can be. It was just kind of a natural, oh, let's have a conversation about this now. And then, uh, I started to get, you know, more involved, more educated. And I, I realized that my dad and I, well, as much as I love my dad, we have distinctly different political viewpoints. So those turned into debates. And then I realized, hey, I'm kind of good at debating. So.
Cool. So, um, so talk about your own experience in the Polk County School District as a student.
So I've had a wide variety of experiences within our, our school system. Uh, I went to Harrison School for the Arts, uh, person, uh, my freshman year. And I was in the musical theater department. And Harrison is unlike just about any other school. It's incredibly unique and in so many ways. So Harrison creates its own little environment socially speaking. And it's entirely separate from Lakeland High School almost in, in a lot of ways. Because the students at Harrison have more after-school responsibilities naturally pertaining to their department. So it creates this little like nice little community bubble almost. Lakeland High School, on the other hand, is a very different experience. As in, I watched two people grab each other's hair in a stairwell and take each other down two days after the school started.
Oh, man.
And I'd never seen a fight in my life before. And I'm walking up the stairs and all of a sudden there's two people going at it.
Wow.
They're brawling the hall.
Yeah, it was, it was insane. So that kind of shows you a little bit of the differences in the culture between the two schools. And then, uh, after spending two years at Harrison, I realized maybe this wasn't the place for me. Because everybody around me wanted to be on Broadway one day.
Yep.
Or, you know, become a musical theater teacher or run a, a studio of some kind. And I realized I wanted to go into law, uh, thanks to a program called Youth in Government. And so I transferred to the Law Academy at George Jenkins High School. And that was also a very different experience. The Law Academy itself also creates that little kind of social bubble, just not in the same ways as Harrison. Um, and in a lot of ways, that's how I see how our academies could improve is that it could create more of that familial type atmosphere. But yeah.
So what got you into law? Like what did you?
Youth in government particularly.
Program?
Yes. So, uh, I joined Youth in Government my sophomore year and I almost instantaneously fell in love. And I was originally going to be in the judicial program, but for some reason I missed a deadline. I don't quite remember why, but I missed a deadline. And so I was put into the legislative program where I got to work on writing legislation. And oh wow, did I absolutely love it.
Well, we read and break down legislation on the show from time to time. Uh, and it, it takes a real special person to even want to read, write, or, or interpret legislation. Uh, so bless you for that. Uh, when you're ready to launch your law podcast, let us know. I'll, uh, we can produce that for you.
Sarah just said bless you.
I'm sorry, I didn't have the rimshot, uh, sound clip ready. Um, so what sparked you to, uh, say, you know what, I'm gonna run for a school board?
So while I've had a lot of great experiences within our school system, I've also had a lot of not-so-great experiences within our school system. And there was a lot that I saw from the student perspective that I didn't feel was being represented on the school board level whatsoever. And you know, when thinking about the decisions the school board makes and the impact it has on students' lives, you start to wonder, well, why isn't there a student voice? Why isn't there representation? Students make up one-seventh of this county. There are seven board seats. They deserve a voice.
Yeah. That's so good. Oh, let's talk about the election process because, and maybe you can help me because I'm confused.
Okay.
So you're running for District Three.
Correct.
This, and this is the first time that I think we've been, we will have voted for a school board here.
Yeah.
Uh, so you have a primary August 28th coming right up.
Yep.
And there are three other candidates in District Three. Uh, and again, one of those I think we did speak to at Polk Pride. But, but let me back up. Okay. So the school district is divided into these seven sub-districts. And you all have the primary on the 28th and then the general November 6th. And you have to live in the district that you're running for, but anyone who lives in the district can vote for anyone? I'm so confused. I don't understand this.
So the only person that the district lines affect ultimately is me.
Okay.
Does that make sense? I have to live in the district in which I'm running.
Right.
But everyone can vote on me because we don't really have single-member districts.
So even though you're not in my district, I can vote for you.
Yes.
Alright. Interesting.
You can be in District, you can be in District Seven and vote on District Three.
Yeah.
Okay.
Cause they're all at-large seats almost, except that they're also districts.
Cause you work, you're, you're representing the school board, but it's like, you know, you go into a board meeting and you make a decision for the whole school district.
Right.
Or the whole, yeah.
Right.
Well, the county.
Right. Exactly.
It just made my head spin when I tried to.
It confuses everyone.
Ah, that's crazy.
Um, okay. So let's just get right to the elephant in the room then. While, while it may seem self-evident to, uh, some of us, what do you say to people who might say, "You're so young, you'd have no life experience. What could you possibly know about anything, much less managing a $940 million budget?" I'm sure you hear that.
Uh, that was actually a question at a forum.
Wow.
So, so I'm, I'm well-prepped for this question. As far as the life experience portion is concerned, no, I don't necessarily have that type of life experience that you might be speaking about. But I have the student experience and that's what's not being represented. We have the life experience that you're being taught, that you're talking about, represented in spades on the school board. Look at Kaye Field. She's been there for 16 years now. I think we have life experience represented. But what we don't have is the student perspective.
Absolutely.
And as far as managing a $940 million, or sorry, billion-dollar budget rather, or million, million? Yeah, 1.4 billion. Sorry, I get confused. I'm, yeah. Uh, as far as managing a $1.4 billion budget, you know, I don't think any candidate in my race can say they've ever managed one.
Right.
You know, and, and as, as far as actually managing one, my approach is I'd like to look at the budget, the budget line by line and actually analyze what we're spending money on. Because you know, I myself, I'm a broke, just recently graduated high school, almost college student kind of. And you know, I don't have a lot of money myself. So you have to be careful with what you're spending money on. And I'd take the same kind of approach to our school board, being financially responsible.
Yeah. And it all breaks down into its separate, you know, little segments and makes it a little easier to chew. I just hate that there's so much disdain for youth. Like I hate that, you know, young people have great ideas and unique perspectives. And it just makes sense to me that when you're running something that serves young people, having that voice is just obvious. That's just so obvious to me.
A quote I came about recently was, "Anything about us without us can't be for us."
Hmm. I like that. That's good. Um, so I've watched some interviews and panels, uh, that you've done since we met at Pride. And I've, I've just been wondering, like, how, how have people been treating you? Have, have people been treating you respectfully or are they playing that you're young and what do you know card?
I get treated pretty respectfully, at least to my face. I mean, I mean, at least to my face, I'm, I'm treated fairly respectfully. There are some people where it's noticeably like, okay, I'm tolerating you, but you know, good for you for getting out there. I don't support your candidacy, but go you. Um, and then there are other people who are just kind of like, okay, I don't wanna really be near you. And then there are other people who are, oh my gosh, finally we have someone actually doing this.
Right.
Yes.
You know, so it's kind of, it's kind of a mixed bag, but you know.
It's good. I just know people can be assholes, you know? So, yeah.
I think my worst experiences have been in the Facebook comments.
Oh, I believe it.
Yeah, no, don't read the comments.
Yeah, don't do that ever.
Right. Um, I think there's really something to this idea that, that school has changed dramatically. School has changed dramatically since I was in school.
Yeah.
Uh, and I graduated in 1977. And so, so it makes sense to me to have someone who's familiar with the student experience. Um, and not what it was like when I was a kid, right? I went to school in a time where school shootings were not common.
Yeah.
Uh, we had some standardized testing, but, and that, this was in Illinois, again, back in the nineties. And I remember even then having tons of anxiety about these tests.
Mm-hmm.
Um, now, if I remember right, this, I heard this at the Polk Education Association Forum. And I'd, I'd like, I'd like to hear this backstory, but only if you're comfortable sharing and talking about it.
Okay.
You mentioned something about a testing experience with your stepsister.
Okay. Yep, I'm, I'm happy to share. So, uh, my stepsister has a lot of anxiety problems. And so these tests would give her a lot of anxiety. And so she would essentially have a panic attack every single time. You can't take a test when you're having a panic attack, you know? And so she would essentially fail all of them. But then that led to her feeling like she herself was a failure. And ultimately that was internalized and she dropped out. And she's just now starting to put the pieces of her life back together. Like she's going after her GED now, she's getting a job now. You know, we're really proud of all the progress she's made, but the unfortunate part is that she had to be torn down to begin with.
Yeah. Yeah, that's too bad. And there's a lot of things in there that we'll unpack in a minute. Uh, the testing itself, uh, you know, the access to mental health care and treatment for anxiety problems, that, all of that stuff, right? Um, but while we're on that topic of, uh, well, let's talk a little bit about graduation success.
Okay.
So the Ledger, uh, local paper, reported back in January that Polk County's high school graduation rate is 75.4%, which is the highest it's been in 10 years.
Correct.
Compared, 75% compared to the statewide average of 82%, which is also a high watermark for 14 years. 14-year high watermark. We're talking about like 25% of students here, and that's just insane to me.
25% of students in Polk County and 18% statewide.
Now, for students with disabilities, and let me call out the ledger here, they said disabled students, and I like to use person-first language, right? So it's, it's students with disabilities, uh, for me. And I think any good journalist would.
What's, what's the definition of disabilities there? I'd be curious to know, like.
Oh, in their metric?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Cause I mean, not all disabilities are.
Are the same, sure.
Are the same. So are we talking?
I, the, I'd imagine that they're just, um, using anybody that has, you know, any kind of specialized education plan.
Right. So they said for students with disabilities, their rate is 46.4% compared to the state average of 66%. And all of that makes me angry. An article in the Orlando Sentinel in January said, quote, "In 2016, the last year for which state-by-state comparisons are available, the average graduation rate nationwide was above 84%. 36 states had higher graduation rates than Florida." And the county even plus, lower than the state average, right? So, you know, feel free to talk about standardized testing in more detail here if you like, because that's obviously one component. But yeah, the question hanging is what the hell? Or what are we, what are we doing? What are we not doing? What, what, what are we missing here?
Absolutely. So I think a lot of it is standardized testing, well, at least that's part of it. Because as with my stepsister, it can cause students to drop out because they, they equate themselves to the test scores. We're not, you know, holistically measuring them as a whole person. We're reducing them down to a number. And that's ridiculous and demeaning and dehumanizing. And students feel that. And students do feel that way. And so I feel like that contributes a lot to the culture around dropping out of high school, like with my stepsister. Um, another aspect with the, you know, ESE programs, um, I heard a horror story from someone who taught ESE in this county and worked with ESE students in this county. Uh, they had deaf students doing hearing portions on tests.
What?
What?
Yes.
That's absurd.
How is that even legal?
Right. And I heard this directly from a teacher. I'm not sure if that's still continuing on today. But at least within recent years, we've had deaf students take hearing portions of tests. That doesn't make sense to me or anyone else. And it's ridiculous. And if you don't think that's contributing to them dropping out, you're wrong.
Right?
I, I mean, if I was that student, I would feel so humiliated and disrespected. And that's what we're doing to these students. That's what we're doing to our students, our future. And that's contributing so much to our dropout rate. I gotta tell you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wow.
Uh, here's another hot topic for you. How, how, as a student, how did your life change after the Parkland shooting?
Oh, God.
That was a fast gear change. Sorry for that. I was meant to take a break there, but we're gonna roll through it.
Okay. Um, wow, that was, sorry. Um, that was kind of a jarring switch. Um, so I think the most stark contrast came when we had a lockdown drill post-Parkland. And before Parkland, um, well, mostly actually more before Pulse, actually. It was more before Pulse. Lockdown drills weren't anything anyone took seriously. Like, okay, this is never really going to happen to us in a million years. And if it does, it's for some reason like some idiot ran across campus that the police are chasing.
Yeah.
You know, nothing that's incredibly threatening to us. We're fine. This is stupid. Um, so people would laugh about it. They'd, you know, play on Snapchat on their phones, do, you know, whatever. It, it was just, haha, okay, 15 minutes, we're not working. Cool. And then after Parkland, I remember being huddled in the corner of, I think it was my English class on, on the little platform stage that they had. And everyone was dead silent. Not a single word. You could hear a pin drop. And then they go around jiggling the door handles and someone jiggled the door handle. And several of the, the students near me instantly jumped and started freaking out. Um, someone even like, like made like a slight noise. They were so freaked out. And you know, you could definitely tell that there was an entirely different tone. It wasn't, you know, this is stupid, dumb, it's never going to happen. It was, oh my God, we could die and we're getting ready for it.
Yeah.
And then we had an actual lockdown drill at some point during the school year. Uh, or not, not like an actual lockdown drill, but an actual lockdown, I mean, rather. And during, it was, it was the last period of the day, uh, about 10 minutes before we were going to be let out of school, imagine that. And, uh, they came over the announcements that we were having an actual lockdown. It was not a drill. It was an actual lockdown. And I was in my law class. And so no one knew what on earth was going on, but she instantly, or our teacher instantly shut off the lights, you know, made sure the, the door was locked secure, um, made sure that we were all following, you know, proper lockdown procedures. And we just waited. And it turns out that it was just two dumb kids who had stolen a car or something, I think it was. And they, they were trying to like escape and it was a whole mess. But, yeah, you know, absolutely really no harm to the students there unless something went really wrong. But, you know, nevertheless, there were students around me who were like, oh my God, we could die.
Yeah, you're prepared for the worst.
We don't know what's going on. In a lockdown, you don't know what's going on. It, it could be a shooter on campus. It could just be two idiot teenagers, but you don't know what's going on. And so everyone was just incredibly tense for the first hour and a half. And then after a while, it seemed like, okay, it can't be anything serious. Otherwise we would have seen more police cars flashing sirens. At that point, you know, we heard some word from the outside. And so everybody started to kind of relax a bit, but it was incredibly tense.
Right. And I kind of, I kind of imagined like not knowing. And I'm sure there's good reasons for the way things are set up, but I would imagine not knowing would just contribute to escalate the, the tension and the, you know, uh, like, I don't know. I think I would rather know than not know.
Yeah. And, and the worst part was some of us were getting periodic updates from our parents. My parents were waiting outside for me and they were like, "Two police cars just entered. Here's a third one with flashing sirens." And I'm like, "You're not helping."
Well, um, so Dan asked, uh, one of our listeners asks, "What is your opinion on restricting cell phones on campuses?"
Um, so I think that it's kind of, you have to find a balance. Because this year at George Jenkins High School, for example, we all had to put our cell phones in little envelopes for the duration of class. And it was kind of, well, a little bit hazardous because everybody would forget their phone in the envelope. And then people would, you know, find out that, oh, you can actually use your touchscreen through the envelope. And so it just became a whole mess of how do you use your cellphone without making the envelope make noise while your teacher's trying to teach you statistics? I, I mean, that's basically what it turned into for just about everyone. I mean, like in some of the advanced classes, you know, students were like, okay, whatever, we don't use our phones anyways. Um, but otherwise it was, everybody was trying to get around the policy in some way or another. So I don't think you're going to get around cellphone usage on campus or in the classroom. But I do think that you can make it productive to the learning experience and learning environment. Because you can get students on their cell phones doing something productive instead. And then they're not texting their friends. You're walking around looking, are you on this website? Are you doing this thing? Are you doing what you're supposed to be doing? You can make it productive.
Sure.
You know, so I think, I think that's one thing that we can do. And, and another thing is just teachers have to be on the game when it comes to cellphone usage if they don't want it in their classroom. You know, if that's the expectation. And it's unfortunate, but I don't really foresee any change as far as students wanting to be on their cell phones.
No.
Not gonna happen.
But the, the manila envelope policy wasn't exactly the solution either.
Right. Yeah. Even if you take them all and lock them in a box, like.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, there's, I think there, I think you're right. There's better ways to handle it. Um, so let's go back to the, uh, the school shootings. So in April, after the state passed the Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School Public Safety Act, which is a mouthful. Uh, this requires an armed law enforcement, for those of you who have just tuned in for the first time to the show. We've been talking about this for every week for months.
February, probably.
Every week for months, yeah. Uh, this provides three options. Additional school resource officers provide a certified law enforcement officer employed by either a local law enforcement agency or by the district, or to arm a school district employee through the state's guardian program. So before we get into our school board specifically, what did you think of this legislation in the first place?
I think it was in terms of legislation at least, kind of poorly written. And that wasn't necessarily because of who wrote it or anything like that. It was because of how fast they wanted to push it through. And as a result, I think there's a lot of things that weren't necessarily considered in crafting this legislation. I was kind of unfortunate. So for instance, with trying to figure out who can or can't be armed in terms of school personnel, it was described as teachers with not, just non-traditional classrooms or,
Right.
You know, teachers who don't have exclusively classroom duties. That, I think that was the language. And so then it came into question, well, what does that mean? If I run a French club after school, do I still have only traditional classroom duties? Or does my French club qualify me? You know?
Right.
So, so there was a really gray area here that it was kind of very confusing. Uh, and I feel like it could have been way more specific.
Yes.
If that makes sense.
Yes. And, and we'll get to this in a minute, but it seems like for our district, like we were kind of pigeonholed by, into our choice by the funding that came along with this. Right? So here's a new program, y'all have to do it. And we're gonna give you some money to take care of it, but not enough money to take care of it. Um, so Polk County School Board voted to approve, uh, option three, uh, the school safety guardian job, which was created with Wild Wild West Sheriff Grady Judd. Uh, shh, school safety guardians will be armed, uniformed district employees who will be certified through the county sheriff's office, which consists of a background check, drug test, psychological exam, and 144 hours of specialized training. And will allow them to carry a firearm on campus. Uh, important to note, that's for elementary schools. Our middle and high schools have had and will continue to have the school resource officer. Right. Did the board make the right decision there?
I'd say that given the restrictions of the legislation, what they had to work with in terms of funding, that this was the best and only decision they realistically could have made. And I'm fairly supportive of it, actually. Um, with that, with that said, you are right. It does come with some funding challenges because it's a partially unfunded mandate. And, and so with that, we'll have to see how the school board decides to divert funding.
Right. So the website, the district's website says, uh, quote, "We simply do not have the time or budget to identify, fund, and train 85 new school resource officers", which is the number that would have been needed to have an officer at each of these campuses and be in compliance with the state. and be in compliance with the state statute within the required timeframe. So there were a lot of restrictions placed on, on this whole thing. Um, they argued that the cost to hire additional SROs would be in excess of three times the allocation given by the state to meet the requirement. Right? So again, here, here are school districts. You can choose to have the school resource officer option, but we're not going to give you enough money for that option. So you couldn't choose, you honestly, you couldn't choose that if you wanted to. Um, so the state sets this new policy, doesn't fund it property, properly. Uh, but, uh, surprise there, uh, the state is providing an additional $3.3 million in, uh, safe school funding. And the program they passed will cost around 3.69 million. So that leaves us in Polk County with a, a remaining $400,000 or so. And that's going to have to come from the general fund.
Yep.
I'm not sure how common like this is across districts, but, um, Polk County carries, uh, millions of dollars in debt.
Polk, Polk is incredibly low in terms of state funding as, as far as where we're ranked. I think, I think we're, we're like fifth or seventh from the bottom, something like that. Um, so, you know, we, we don't actually get a whole lot of money from the state. And that contributes to, you know, our lack of funds as a district.
Yeah. Yeah. Uh, so the, the last data I got was 2013. Uh, we were carrying a debt of 300, uh, 383.5 million dollars.
Yep.
Go ahead.
I just, this just sprung into my head though, but the food program is alive and well because they just gave all kinds of schools in Polk County free, free breakfast and lunch. So where does that money come from?
I believe that was part of a state decision. I'm not entirely, I'm not entirely sure that was.
That makes sense. I'm just like, it just, I just remembered like seeing that.
Yeah. So, so they can, they can decide to fund different programs. And that's one of the decisions that they made was to give Polk funding for that.
They did that. That's amazing.
Which is fantastic. Yeah.
Um, yeah.
Yeah. So, uh, speaking of funding, there is also on our ballot this fall, a sales tax referendum.
Please vote for it.
To, yeah. That, okay, that was my whole paragraph.
There you go.
Um, so this, but, but I think it's, I don't know. I don't think it's enough. So this would continue a pre-existing countywide half-cent sales tax for the next 15 years for capital expenditures to improve
It's not a tax increase.
student and campus safety. Renovate, expand, modernizing existing schools and facilities, upgrade technology and security projects, uh, for any new construction for growth, including land purchase and so on. Look, if you're listening to this in Polk County, let me echo, vote yes for this.
And, and if you have any doubt, drive by the schools and look at the ones that have been there for a long time. They're the ones that need this desperately.
Yep.
I mean, I look at the, some of the schools just within 15 miles of us.
Let me, let me emphasize, it is not a tax increase. It's just reapproving the existing tax and it's for capital improvements. Our students need these funds desperately.
Yes. So even if you are someone who is like, when you hear this and you're like, no, that's my money. Don't take my money. I worked hard for my money. Taxation is theft. If that's you, vote yes anyway. Because as far as I'm concerned, the half cent's not enough.
Yeah, right?
Especially when you're looking, okay, we kicked the can down the road 15 years, which we should do and vote yes. But in 15 years, the game is going to be so different.
Yeah.
It should be, uh, in my opinion, it should be more.
Some counties have, have a full cent approved and, and some have even used that to contribute toward teacher salary and that sort of thing.
Mm-hmm. I just, it's so crazy because the minute you talk about any kind of tax, whether it's new or continued, there is this chunk of people who grab their pitchforks and you can't raise my taxes. You can't, that's my money. You can't take my money.
Same people that if you go dig through their couches, you're gonna find those pennies.
Right.
Sorry.
It's not like they don't have the penny to spare.
But listen, we have a social agreement in the United States of America that education is a foundational block to the, to, it's, to the betterment of all. Right? We have all agreed that, and this is why we have the school systems that we have. We have all agreed that whether you have children or not, uh, it is worth all of us to invest our time, invest our money, because better educated people, like the rising tide lifts all boats, right? It's better to have an, an educated public.
Oh, well, educated society benefits us all.
Yes. Yes. You got something?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Dan would like to know, Kayla, with low educational funding, what is your strategy to increase teachers' salaries and retention? Arizona just experienced a teacher's strike and have been granted an unfunded 20% pay increase.
Dan, thank you for asking me this question. I really appreciate it.
Dan's two steps ahead of me on the, uh, I love you, Dan.
Yes, Dan, you're the best.
Dan, you're awesome. So, so as far as strategies go, uh, to, I'm gonna, I'm gonna tackle this in two parts. Strategies to increase funding and then also strategies to improve teacher retention. So strategies to improve funding. What we need to do is actually better lobby the state legislature for the funding that we need. We haven't effectively done it yet. And that's evident when you see how much money we receive in terms of other counties, considering we are one of the largest counties at least by, by geographic area.
Right.
And, and so, um, sorry. And so by actually writing the legislation ourselves, by partnering with other districts to craft the legislation ourselves, we can put it on our legislators desk like interest groups do, like lobbying groups do.
Yep.
And actually get the legislation that we need passed. But we have to start treating ourselves as an interest group fighting for the interests of our students. And, and that comes from effectively lobbying and advocating. Um, and then as far as, as far as teacher retention, this kind of breaks down into two parts, retention and recruitment, really. So as far as teacher retention, you have to tackle both the internal and external factors that contribute to it. Teachers within the first three to five years, I was reading a case study on it. Uh, the, the external, internal factors they experience that, uh, affected them were salary, student discipline, uh, testing, bureaucracy. And so when, when looking at teacher retention, it's not just all about salary. You can also improve teacher retention by working with those other factors. So with student discipline, our teachers within their first three years of teaching, they're not receiving enough support when it comes to student discipline. Our, our administrations have to be willing to train them properly, first off, before they enter the classroom. And second off, be willing to back them up when an incident has occurred. Because they don't back them up at every school, at least not with every administration. And that's something that should happen across the county. You know, they, our teachers need the support, especially in their first three years. An interesting result of our, our teacher retention crisis of sorts is that a lot of our teachers didn't go into education. They didn't start out thinking, hey, I want to be a teacher when I get out of college. They started, I want to go into biology and now I'm broke. What do I do?
Yeah.
And it turns into, oh, well, this is an option for me and they need teachers in my county. And this doesn't seem so hard and maybe I could do this for a few years. And then they start as a teacher, but they don't know, you know, anything about student discipline or actually managing a classroom. They were never that teacher intern in the classroom that sometimes took over lessons, you know? It was throwing you into the classroom first day. Here you go. Good luck.
Yep.
And students can be sharks.
Well, and you're talking about retaining teachers, um, but, but also like, how many teachers are we short going into the school year?
Too many. I don't remember the exact number, but it's too many.
Way too many. Yeah.
Yeah, a hundred, a hundred some, I think. Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. Exactly. So we'll be
Which is absurd.
So we'll be rapidly trying to fill those positions. But the people we fill those positions with might not have an education background.
Right.
Which isn't necessarily a bad thing.
Right. You need to support them.
But you have to give them the support that they need in order to manage it, especially within their first three years. It's been proven that if a teacher is going to drop out of the profession, it's going to be in those first three years. Or it's going to be later on when they decide to retire ultimately, or, or some major life crisis happens. But we have to give them more support in those first three years if we expect to keep them beyond. And, and that also means that when it comes to bureaucracy, we can't be micromanaging them so much. I mean, I've been in a classroom where a biology teacher with a PhD in education and at least a master's degree or two in some science field was having lesson plans written by the district and his classroom essentially strangled. And it frustrated him so much. Guess what? He no longer teaches in Polk.
Yep.
Guess what? He took a job at a college that's in some Midwestern state and he no longer teaches here.
Yep.
And let me tell you, I hate biology, but I showed up to that class because of him.
I always hated biology too.
I show up, I showed up to that class because of him. And students and future generations at the school I attended won't get to experience that. And that's because of our teacher micromanagement. And that's because of our testing crisis. We micromanage them in part because of these tests.
Yeah.
And the unfortunate thing about these tests is the teacher is, is forced to teach to the test. And if, if teaching is something they love and that's what they went to school for and are genuinely passionate about, then the, our testing culture just perverts their passion. They can't actually teach and, and actually meet the individual needs of students because they're being forced to teach simply to the test.
Yep.
It's more about cramming as many facts into our heads as we can memorize than actually reaching into our hearts and minds and bringing out something great, like amazing teachers can do.
Yep. I'll give you two examples. I hated biology too. But, but mine was because I, I had a teacher who, like, that was, my struggle was, if I'm, if I'm gonna learn something, I need to know why. The, the why is a big thing for me. Um, and so when the answer to why is, well, there's a quiz on Friday and a test next week, that's not good enough.
Yeah.
Why do I need to label the draw and label the parts of a cell? I need a why for that. And because you're going to test me on it later is not a good enough why. Why do I need that information? And so that was a big thing that was missing. Um, I had a history teacher who, um, who was quite the opposite, was just amazing, would paint these pictures of what life might have been like during those times. Right? I've had history teachers that are memorize these names, dates, times, places, yada, yada, yada.
And it makes you not want to show up whatsoever.
Yes. Oh, and it's awful because here I am going on 40 and I've never needed any of that information. But if the purpose of learning about World War II was to understand what was going on during that time, the, if the why is, is a broader understanding of what was happening in the world.
And how we got to where we are today.
Yes. If that's the intent, then, then it's great. Still don't need to know names, dates, and places to know what happened during that time and, and how, and, and to recognize history repeating itself.
One of, one of my greatest history teachers in middle school, he would instead just kind of broadly essay test us. And of course, everybody would freak out about that. It's not multiple choice. But the essay question was basically, so explain what happened in, in such and such a, a situation or time period. And try to give as much detail as you remember, but you know, just explain as best you can.
Yeah.
And, you know, you never knew what he would choose. So you had to, you know, learn it all. And then he would just choose one certain thing. And it was great because you didn't have to memorize names, dates, and places as long as he could tell that you knew what you were talking about. It was, congrats, you passed.
Yes.
Okay, so we're backtrack a little bit, sort of. But Victoria says, she wants to know what your position is on security money versus educational financing, especially considering Parkland and Sandy Hook. And she says, not just tactics, but financing specifically.
Okay. So as far as how we could better finance safety or?
I think she's wanting to, to know, like, it says, security money versus educational financing. So, um.
Like, how do you balance?
Like, yeah.
The two, like if you're, if you're looking at the budget, maybe.
Where is the line drawn, where the priority is and what?
Yeah.
And how to, yeah.
I don't really think that there is a line, quite honestly. I don't see the two as separate from one another. I see the two as very much so working together because I've been in a classroom where there was a bomb threat on social media at the beginning of the school day. And by the end of the day, seventh period, no one was in school. So our security very much so contributes to our educational experience. If students are terrified, they're not showing up to school to begin with, or they're literally fleeing the campus as the hours go by. So I don't, I don't think it's necessarily fair to view the two as separate from one another because they very much so play off of one another. And so with that said, better financing for our, our security and education is going to come from, again, better lobbying at the state level, you know? And, and maybe even an approval of another half cent later in the future. Who knows? But that's something that the, the Polk citizens will have to take on as an initiative and something that I'd be interested in maybe seeing happen.
Yeah, definitely. I'm, I'm all for that. Um, so I wanted to read one more of Dan's comments. Dan, 100% against arming teachers. Hard stop.
Please don't. He also said he's loving your response.
Yeah.
Oh, awesome. Thank you, Dan. Uh, as far as arming teachers, that's not exactly what the legislation, uh, Florida passed down, provided for, which I'm very glad for. But every time I hear someone arming teachers, I just want to add that I imagine my, uh, tiny English teacher that was about yay, hi, and baked cookies every Friday with a little handgun. And she had like white hair.
I'll get you, sonny.
Yeah.
Sweetest lady ever. Can't imagine her with a handgun.
Yes, exactly. Um, okay. So what do you think about, uh, US Secretary of Education Betsy DeVos in general? And, uh, and, uh, her affinity for charter schools in general?
So I was in the legal academy at George Jenkins. And through the legal academy, I got to interact with a lot of students who are very politically engaged. And we live in Polk County, so there were a lot of more conservative leaning students. And there were some liberal students as well. And across the board, it seemed that the ruling was, I don't care what party she is or isn't, or what party I am, I hate her.
Yeah.
You know, and I mean, that's a little dramatic, but that's legitimately what people in my law class said. And, you know, I know so many teachers whose, whose political leanings I may or may not know, depending on the teacher. And, and all of them dislike Betsy DeVos, all of them. And if, if that's not enough for you to not want her anywhere near education, I don't know what is when both students and teachers don't want her.
Yeah. Um, how have you seen that national conversation about charter schools have an effect on the local area?
Oh, absolutely.
When you're out talking to people, what are they saying?
Absolutely. Charter schools is especially a touchy subject in Polk County because we have the entire Lake Wales Charter School District, uh, that came about a little while back. And so with charter schools, I don't know how much of the conversation is actually driven by national conversation versus just, you know, this is what's going on locally.
Right here. Yeah.
Yeah. So it's kind of hard to tell. But, but locally, there's very much so a conversation around charter schools and how to proceed, especially when two of our schools will now be, you know, taken over by charter school company because of, you know, the recent turnaround failures.
Right. So talk about that a little bit more.
Okay.
Uh, the, we, so we have a plan in place. We're, we're, our, our grade is low. We're gonna try to turn it around and, and be a better school. And if we don't, then, then the corporation's gonna come in and run the school for us. Is that?
Well.
Am I, am I over-exaggerating?
No, not really. I, I mean, quite honestly, it just, it's a little bit interesting to me that the solution for, you know, dealing with schools that don't turn around, mainly because they have students in lower socioeconomic backgrounds that can't pass tests, the solution is to then bring in this outside company that we now have to spend more money on instead of spending money in our classrooms to help those students actually pass the standardized tests they shouldn't be taking to begin with to get a school grade that's rather arbitrary in any case.
Yes.
God, that's a mouthful.
Right?
Right. That was a little bit much to unpack, but.
But seriously, like the, the whole problem is a test. It's not that the kid doesn't necessarily know the information. It's the way that the tests are being hammered down.
Something interesting was brought up to me a little while ago and I don't quite remember by who, but it was the idea of educational scaffolding. If you're familiar with a concept, then you can then branch off of that concept a little bit easier and then build off of it, so on, so forth. That's, that's kind of how we build our vocabulary. We piece together the words, context of the words in a sentence. And we can, we can understand the meaning of a word that way. It's scaffolding. But some students don't have the same scaffolds as everyone else. And we see especially with students of a lower socioeconomic background that the experiences that they have had are not necessarily the same. that the experiences that they have had are not necessarily the same as the students uh, that come from a a, you know, well, more well-off family. And and so because of that scaffolding concept, when it comes to especially taking the English portions of tests, it's incredibly difficult for them to understand even the context of the paragraph. Because we're having our students read paragraphs about something even as simple as going to a library, but that's not relatable to some of these students. And so they're trying to figure out, well, what's going on in this paragraph anyways? I'm not quite sure. I've never been in this situation. What is this? Rather than focusing on answering the questions because they're trying to process.
Yeah. Yeah, that's good.
Dan wants to know. Kayla, what stance do you take when it comes to parents who expect the educational system to teach their kid life skills and want to fault teachers for not teaching kids basic socialization?
It's always the teachers' fault.
It's always the teachers' fault. I think I think that there needs to be a cohesive partnership between the schools and the parents when it comes to, you know, educating the whole child. Because it shouldn't just be the parent's responsibility and it shouldn't just be the school's responsibility. But we need to find a happy medium because not all of our parents can be incredibly involved. I mean, if you think about especially, again, students from a lower socioeconomic background, parents working two jobs, student gets on the bus in the morning at five thirty AM, they might not see him again until six o'clock at night. Uh, how are we, you know, supposed to, how are we expecting our parents to be incredibly involved when their level of involvement is, I have to provide my student with a roof. I have to provide for my family, the basic needs. And and so so much of parenting at that level is, how can I provide the basic needs? So when it comes, especially to that sort of circumstance, the school has to step in and provide more because that's what's going to help the student's education ultimately. A student can't learn if they haven't eaten that morning. If, you know, if if they come from a chaotic home background, they're going to need additional support that we can't necessarily expect out of parents. And as far as teaching life skills, you know, there are some life skills that I'd like to see brought back to schools. I'd like to see more woodshops because the last time I saw one, it was in Harrison School for the Arts tech room. You know, and that shouldn't be the only place where you can do tech work in the county. You know, and I don't know that it is, but I know at George Jenkins, for example, we don't really have shop really. And and I know that's the case at a lot of high schools, but there are so many of our students who love working with their hands. Why not? That's a life skill I'd love to see brought back. You know, I'd love to see, you know, maybe something like financial literacy as a life skill that's taught. Because, you know, that's something that parents might not necessarily be incredibly cognizant of or very good at themselves. And so in the interest of, you know, improving our students' quality of life when they get out of high school and even helping them figure out how to finance college in the process of that course, maybe. Even helping them, you know, fill out job applications and and do that along with the financial literacy. That sort of thing to help them get kickstarted because, again, especially with students in a lower socioeconomic class, that's how we can help them rise.
Yes. Do you want to take a break?
Yeah.
Or do you want to just roll through it? I've got, I've only got a few more questions. I don't have a ton more.
Just take a little quick one.
Yeah, okay. Get everybody.
Get some refills.
A refresh.
Yeah.
All right, well, we'll take a quick break then, and we'll come back. Well, that was funky. All right, so we'll be back uh, in just a little bit with our special in-studio guest, Kayla Tetter. Uh, we'll have some listener questions uh, that were pre-submitted and some of my own after this. You're listening to Sarah Talk.
In today's health-conscious society, you have many beverage choices, but do you know what's in all of them? So much sugar, sodium, and things you can't even pronounce, dihydrogen monoxide. What's that? Sometimes you wish you just had a simple, more elegant solution for your beverage needs. Introducing H two O, the first ever chemical-free thirst quencher. H two O is simple, simply composed of three portions of two elements, hydrogen and oxygen. H two O means chemical-free, unlike water, which is filled with all sorts of shit. When we tested H two O, we found traces of no other elements. So pure, the bottle may as well be fucking empty with all the same nutritional content as a breath of cool mountain air. First widely featured on Goop dot com, actress Gwyneth Paltrow revealed that she exclusively uses H two O for her vaginal steaming process. After all, why use water when you can steam it with H two O? So now we invite you to run out to your local garden hose and drink that shit. Remember, it's not water, it's H two O.
H two O bottled by Flint Bottling Company in Flint, Michigan. Product not actually endorsed by Goop or Gwyneth Paltrow. Please do not use H two O for vaginal steaming, or better yet, please do not steam your vagina. H two O is actually just water. Water is a set of molecular compounds. It's a chemical. Everything is a chemical.
I was feeling so alone.
I was going through a really difficult time.
I was embarrassed and a little scared.
I didn't want to bother anyone.
I didn't think they'd understand.
I thought it would just make things worse.
It was tough at first, but I did it.
It ended up taking a huge weight off my shoulders.
I feel a lot better.
I'm glad I asked for help.
I asked for help.
I asked for help.
I asked my aunt.
I asked my dad.
I asked my teacher.
I asked my mom.
I asked the Trevor Project.
Now, I feel like I can get through this.
I know that I am brave.
You can do this.
You can do this.
Ask for help.
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 Whatever it is, ask for help.
If you're thinking about suicide or need support, call the Trevor Lifeline at one eight six six four eight eight seven three eight six. Trained counselors are there to help twenty-four seven. Ask for help.
This is Evan from Portage, Michigan. You are listening to Sarah Talk.
Evan, I love you so much.
Evan, you rock.
Oh, thank you for recording that.
So sweet.
That was cute.
Uh, we love Evan. This is the original theme music of the Sarah Talk podcast. Back when we were, it was light and fluffy and we were talking about my transition and, you know, what what's it like to go to the doctor and get the hormones and do the things? And then Donald Trump got elected president and uh, the the war on uh, on LGBTQ people and we just got real angry and then it became this monster that is now. But that was the original and and when we interviewed, when we interviewed uh, his mom Morgan the first time, uh, that was, that was the feedback, like they listened back to it. And he really liked that music.
Yeah, he really did.
And he was like, never change that song, never change your theme song. And then we changed it later and yeah. So I love that I can reuse it again with.
Yeah, with this little promo voice thing.
That's awesome.
Uh, yes, Dan, that was a short break and I already have another question in the chat. Victoria says, I'd like to ask, what can be done to bring vocational and practical classes, cooking, basic family finance, et cetera, back to schools? Should we teach to a test or teach what people actually need to live day to day?
Okay, fantastic question. So I'd like to address part of the the vocational education sort of portion there because I absolutely love our vocational education programs, but they do need some work. So I'll start by uh, talking a little bit about my own experience. Uh, with our vocational education programs, I didn't actually know they existed until about my sophomore year.
Sad.
That's about how well-known it is. I didn't know it existed until my sophomore year, but then again, I also went to Harrison, so I was in a little bit of a sheltered culture. Um, so then I found out, listening to the announcements one day, that hey, applications for academies are closing in two weeks if anybody wants to apply. I looked at the.
You're like, what's that?
Yeah, I looked at the Polk Academy site and I realized they have a legal academy at George Jenkins, which is twenty minutes down the road from me and I don't have to wake up as early to get to a school thirty minutes away from me and I get to go for law. Awesome. And um, so I talked to my parents and they were like, well, we already have to drive you to Harrison. We'd prefer to drive you to George Jenkins, actually, and it sounds like a great program. And so through the Academy of Legal Studies there, I actually got my accredited legal professional certification. And you know, I'd be able to get a job at a law office of, you know, high school.
That's awesome.
Which is awesome because, you know, that's how I can help pay for my college. That's how I can help support myself, maybe if I take a gap year, you know, which I'm not. But you know, for other students who decide to, you know, there's so many endless possibilities of what you can do with that industry certification. And it makes them competitive. It gives them an edge in the job market, which is awesome. But unfortunately, there's also some problems. See, I had the fortune of being able to to attend the Law Academy at George Jenkins, but not every student can. And that's not just at George Jenkins, but a law academy in general throughout our county. And this really applies to just about any academy, if you look at it. Uh, but what I really want to talk about is the divide between the quote-unquote white collar and blue collar job academies in this county because it's a pretty stark contrast and it's kind of appalling, not kind of, very. Uh, so the the most clear distinction that I can draw is between Tennerock High School and George Jenkins High School. Tennerock High School has a construction academy and a Lakeland Electric Power Academy and a digital design academy. George Jenkins has a digital media academy. It has a law academy, a medical academy, an engineering academy, an agricultural academy. Um, uh, I'm forgetting some. It also's got an expansive video production program and basically anything you want there, except construction, power and yeah. So so you start to see kind of the divide, and it's not just those two schools, but that is the clearest division. Uh, the only exception is agriculture, which is pretty ubiquitous, makes sense. We're in Polk County.
Yep.
And and so what I'd like to see is we, okay, ideally, it would be based on the demand in the area. So you do some cer- student surveys, track students' demand over time and offer the academies where they're actually wanted and track the trends in demand. Because that's not going to change dramatically year to year realistically. There's gonna be some steady ups and downs. So if you offer them where they're actually wanted, students are much more likely to get used out of them and be part of those programs in the first place. And when it comes to, you know, the locations that they're offered, it needs to be a little more spread out. Because, you know, if somebody wants to go to a construction academy and they don't go to Tennerock, there's not a lot of other options yet. Thankfully, we're adding some construction academies in the next few years, which is awesome. But as of right now, there's not really a lot of options. As far as going to, you know, the law academy, if I didn't have the fortune of being able to transport myself, I would have been zoned for Bartow, which has a criminal justice program, but isn't exactly the same. And I wouldn't have been able to go to and the Academy of Legal Studies and become an accredited legal professional. Transportation is a barrier for so many of our students to participate in these programs that we have to constantly be thinking about how we can combat that.
So how do we get those programs?
So again, it comes from, it comes from the demand and partnering with our local businesses. So for example, with, again, back to the George Jenkins Law or or Florida, uh, George Jenkins Law Academy, oh, they partnered with Patton Law to offer a scholarship to some of our students. And you know, th- those kind of partnerships can help fund academies, build them, et cetera, et cetera. And it creates a whole experience. So there might be job offerings in a certain field, and if you're partnered with this local business, they might say, hey, are any of your students interested in applying? We'll prioritize, you know, student applicants. Let us know. And you can get those sort of opportunities. And and also with businesses like that, that's how you can create those sort of academies because businesses like to see that too. But it takes those community partnerships to begin with.
Right.
If I can bring it full circle here, right? So this is, this is a great way to, you know, uh, maybe develop a skilled workforce and and give uh, students some some more options who, um, you know, particularly when we talk about, you know, uh, some engineering type things.
Exactly.
With um, with electrical and whatnot, who may not want to go to college and get a degree and uh, we still need skilled labor. Um, and and so there's that component of it, right? But then there's also, just going back to that sort of basic, uh, you know, when I was in high school, this will really date me and might locate me. Um, I, we had woodshop, we had home ec. There there was, when I was in high school, they they had a pilot class called Energy or something. And they, uh, we we did things like, um, so we had to like learn how to change the oil in your car. And uh, one of the projects we had to do was like, you're going to plan a, uh, you're you're the manager of a NASCAR driver and you're going to plan the the tour. Like, you've got to go to all of these different stops. And so you have to work out, right? You're gonna leave Illinois and you're gonna go to Indiana, and then you're gonna go here, and then you're gonna go there, and then you're gonna go here.
I would have been really good at that, by the way.
You had to track all the mileage and figure out, you know, based on today's current price of gas and do all of this.
Interesting.
Planning, right?
It's like a business planner type of thing.
Like it, that class was, I only offered it a few years. Um, but in home ec, right, home ec wasn't just cooking, right? It was also like, here's how to write a check.
Yeah.
Right?
Here's how to sew a button.
And you want to know something that's kind of backwards? I learned how to write a check when I was in, I believe, the fourth grade.
Yeah.
Or fifth grade.
I learned it in fifth grade.
Yeah, yeah, I learned how to write a check in the fifth grade, which you don't ever need to know until you're at least a junior in high school, basically.
And even now, like, we write like maybe one or two checks a month because everything's digital now.
I didn't have to write a check before this campaign. I mean, that's kind of embarrassing to say, but I never had to write a check before. And I was kind of like, well, I don't really remember how we did this in fifth grade.
Yeah.
Right?
So you, so you know, it's it's just that kind of common sense thing of do, do fifth graders really need to know how to write checks? This isn't something we need to be teaching them now.
Where were, we were at this, we went to the school for orientation last year or the year before, and I had to write a check to pay for school uniform shirts. And I was sitting there and they, this sixth grader was was manning the table. And I'm like, I'm sorry, you're gonna have to give me a minute. I gotta remember how to write a check. And he's just looking at me like, you dummy.
Yeah, you dumb old lady.
Yeah, we just learned this last year.
Yeah, right. I'm like, here, why don't you just write it for me and I'll, I'll sign it.
Yeah.
But a lot of, so a lot of the things we're talking about here, um, which which are necessary and and will be great uh, offerings and programs, um, those you have to stack next to the, okay, well, here's the state requirements of the math and the science and the things that you have to do and that we're going to test against.
But it's not impossible.
No, 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 not at all. Um, but I, you're just trying to balance that, like, I'm going back with the the standardized testing and this, all of the scoring, the scorecarding that happens that, you know, you're trying to balance. Like, I really want to educate these kids in a kind of holistic way and really give them the skills that they're gonna need to walk out of here and go be an adult.
Fun function, like somewhat.
Function in society, not just ready to do a bunch of crazy things in college.
Right, right. Are we, are we, wh- what is the purpose of of the lower education? Is it, you know, is it for like only preparing kids for col- for college? Or should, you know, should we be doing this other stuff? And I think it's interesting, if you look back at the history of high schools, and I think we've talked about this before. Um, there was a point, once upon a time, when uh, you got through about fifth grade or so and then you went to work on the family farm. And that's what you did.
Or the coal mine.
And then, no, no, and then the Industrial Revolution happened.
Yeah.
Right, and then we were, then we were.
And then it was the coal mine.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, right. Then we needed skilled labor. And so high school became a way to create that labor force. And I think we are, uh, we're still struggling to figure out how to ad- adapt from that mindset to the complicated world that we live in today.
Yeah, I I couldn't agree with you more.
Good, that was easy. Okay, so.
Don't have much to add there. I I don't.
Well said, Sarah.
Right.
Yeah.
So, um, so I have some other questions that were sent in prior to the broadcast. Um, and there are some from a bit of a more personal angle too. So let's talk about transgender students. I'm transgender, I have a child, uh, soon to be two in the Polk County School District. I'm a background check volunteer, a chaperone our class field trips. Uh, do you remember, there was one field trip, this is kind of an aside, where like the kids were assigned the chaperone by gender?
Oh, yeah, this was this past year with the crazy teacher we were telling you about. Um, she had grouped all the kids together and basically, the two of us, we both went on the field trip and we went to go get our assignment, like usually you get like two or three kids with your child. Um, and she goes, we had so many um, chaperones and I was trying to keep all the boys together and all the girls together. Now, there were only four boys in the class. And so our son was assigned to us and he didn't have any friends with him. So it was the two of us and our kid at the field trip, which was like, well, we could have just done this on the weekend.
Yeah.
Um, but it was just really weird the way she said it. She's like, I wanted to keep all the boys together. And of course, we got like really bent out of shape about it because why are we segregating by sexes?
Right.
And and I mean, I would get bent out of shape about that for for. And, and I mean, I would get bent out of shape about that for, for a number of reasons. I mean, social integration, maybe.
Right. Can girls not hang out with the boys? Really? What's your problem?
Can boys not hang out with girls? What's the issue? And, and I mean, you know, you see the divisiveness, especially in like elementary school and middle school where all the boys clump together and all of the girls clump together. You, you have to break that up and learn, you know, teach them to learn to, you know, get along with one another. But that only comes from social integration. You can't do that. Yeah, you can't do that if you're actively dividing them.
And there's, um, there was another aspect of that where I said, the only way that it would make sense out of field trip would be like, okay, I have like four boys and I have whatever, whatever, whatever the rest is, 16 girls or whatever it is in my group. And I have six moms and one dad. And they're going to need to go take bathroom breaks and I want them to be supervised.
Which makes sense.
That, but that's the only reason. But even then, with the abundance of chaperones we had, why not just say, okay, this one, this group, we're going to have three parents in this group and we're going to put six groups together.
Right.
And, and then you guys can just, then you have like a mom and a dad and a, or whatever.
We naturally did that anyway.
Yeah, we have, yeah, we, we know a lot of the parents, so we kind of just grouped together anyway. But like, why not create that environment? Because not all parents are going to say, hey, we're alone with our kid. Do you want to just hang out with us today?
And not, and not all, not all parents are comfortable with that or know everybody. So it's incumbent upon the teacher to facilitate that sort of interaction.
It was just interesting that like for the year with the least, the least amount of, uh, teacher interaction with us, like every parent showed up. It was like.
Oh yeah.
There was a parent for every child.
I think that that was very much.
Which is great. Like, yes, that's what it should be, but.
I, I think that, that said a lot about like, well, I'm not sending my kid out on a field trip without supervision, um, if I can't get a note back.
Okay. Well, that was in a, that, that was a side street.
Sorry.
So now I remember we covered this when it happened. Um, there was a statement from a school board member in 2016. And I remember thinking like, holy shit, like how am I going to be perceived at my kid's school? But also like, what about any trans kids that are in the system? And we have a couple of friends who recently graduated from a Polk County High School who are trans. Uh, we just had dinner with them this, this week. Um, so in 2016, when panic took over trans people, uh, using restrooms was just, the, the panic was earth, earth shattering volumes. Uh, Tim Harris, Polk County School Board Member from District Seven.
Retiring.
Whose seat is open. Yes, whose seat is open. He is not running for reelection, thank God. Uh, Tim posted to his personal Facebook, quote, "My child's safety in a public restroom is more important than a man who wants to dress up as a woman." Now, first of all, this is an obvious misrepresentation of what being transgender is. I am not a man dressing up as a woman. Um, at the time, Jim Maxwell, Director of Student Services, said that Polk County School District handles requests by transgender students on a case by case basis. Some students, for example, have been allowed to use the office restroom, which is a single unit. Okay, that was in April of 2016. The district puts together a team to kind of task force this issue. Uh, and then in May, Superintendent Jaclyn Byrd responded to the letter that Obama's Department of Education and Justice sent out, uh, that basically said, you must affirm transgender students as the identity that they, uh, tell you that they are. Uh, and we all know that, that, you know, that was revoked by the Trump administration because, you know, Obama bad, Trump good. But, uh, so at the time, the district said they would handle it with the utmost care, but they're going to make sure they comply with the law. So, uh, where does Kayla Tetter, future school board member land on all of this?
I, I appreciate the school board handling it on a case by case basis because I can see some instances and where it could possibly be abused. But I don't think that that's the assumption we should automatically walk in with. Because I think that sort of mindset is ultimately harmful to the, the school culture and environment and to our students. So, you know, the way I kind of approach it is, you know, if the student is genuinely transgender, genuinely i- identifies as, you know, whatever gender they may, uh, and you see his consistent track record of that. It's not something that's just wildly out of nowhere new. Then yes, obviously they should be able to use the restroom. It's a restroom, you know? And making them use the office restroom, while that's maybe a solution in some people's minds, at the same time, it's not necessarily easy for the student either. I remember at Lakeland High School, if you wanted to use the office restroom, it could be entirely across campus.
Yep.
I'm not going to leave class for 10 minutes to walk there and then another 10 minutes to walk back almost, you know, or at least seven. And, and miss, you know, basically 15 minutes of class trying to use the restroom. Because that's harmful to my, you know, my education.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, that's, you know, absolutely ludicrous, you know, especially when periods are only 50 minutes long at some schools. You're losing, you know, a third of that to going to the restroom. You shouldn't have to do that. Now, in the case of, oh boy, I says, oh, I identify as transgender. I'm a girl now. I just want to go into the female restroom. That's a problem. And that's why we should identify it on, you know, a case by case basis. Because you know, it's, it can, it's very obvious when somebody says, oh, I'm transgender now. And they walk into a women's restroom and it's not legitimate. But again, you know, that's kind of the approach.
And also is that really happening?
No, it's not a thing.
It's not a thing. I mean, I can see some, you know, teenage boy do it. Like, it's not.
As a stunt.
Like a one-off thing.
Like a one-off thing. It's not, you know, entirely out there. But it's not something that happens every single day of our lives.
Right. So, and, and I think this, uh, brings in a good point of why we need mental health professionals in our schools. Um, there are three things that a mental health professional looks for when identifying transgender people. Consistency, insistency and persistency, right? If you're consistent with your, uh, with your gender, uh, identity, insistent about it and persistent with it, uh, those are kind of the hallmarks that, that, uh, healthcare professionals look for and go, yeah, okay, that's definitely, you know, textbook gender dysphoria.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which is kind of what I was leaning for my answer toward. If they've been, you know, clearly consistent with it, then let them use the restroom.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so we've kind of looked at this from a legal perspective, um, in light of the Trump administration revoking the Obama guidance, the 1964 Civil Rights Act and, and legal precedent, um, over the last few years. And we, we talked about last week, there was a case, um, Drew Adams from St. John's County, Florida. I don't know if you've seen this story, uh, he took his school district to court because their plan was Drew can use a single occupancy restroom, like the nurse's office, uh, but not the boys restroom. And the federal court in that case ruled in his favor saying, quote, "The evidence is that Drew Adams poses no threat to the privacy or safety of any of his fellow students. Rather, Drew Adams is just like every other student at Nice High School. A teenager coming of age in a complicated, uncertain and changing world. When it comes to his use of the bathroom, the law requires that he be treated like any other boy." And so there's mounting legal precedent that, that this is the way to handle this. Um, and when you consider that along with, uh, you know, the, the district's financial, uh, standing at the moment. Um, if a trans student brought a case against the district on a case like this, would that,
Oh boy.
Would that be worth pursuing legally or, or like how, how would we handle that?
So how would, how would the district handle that?
Yeah. How would you want to handle it?
Oh boy. So, so if a student were to say school.
Let's say a student comes in and says, uh, hey, I'm transgender. I've been seeing a therapist, maybe, whatever. Um, and the school district says, okay, case by case basis, we meet with you, we feel, you know, we talk it out. But, but maybe we're not willing to allow you to use the, the shared restroom, right? You have to use the nurse's restroom. And the, the parents and the students say, well, but that's separate but equal. That's having the Negro's restroom separate from the whites restroom. And that's not okay. We don't, we don't agree to that. Well, that's our policy. That's how we're going to handle this. And so then they say, well, we're going to take you to court then.
School district cannot afford that. I'll be quite honest. Uh, there is no scenario in which I see that as a win for the school district. And that's something that they should be very cognizant of in handling this on a case by case basis of, you know, if they make the wrong decision and a student decides to take that sort of action, you know, they have to be willing to remedy the situation immediately because they cannot afford to get in a lawsuit of that nature, especially not now.
Right. Definitely. Um, and I did note that the, the student code of conduct was updated in 2016 to specify in the discrimination statement that sex includes sexual orientation, transgender status or gender identity. So that was a, a wild hypothetical, right? It seems like the district.
The district has put in all of the proper words in their policies as far as, you know, transgender policy, LGBT inclusive policy. They have all the right words in place. The problems that I've mostly seen within our school district is just simply enforcing those already existing policies.
Right. Um, the next question comes from Mandy. She says, "This is slightly controversial, but what plans would you have in place if your teachers go on strike?" And I'll break this up into two parts. Obviously the goal is to prevent the teacher strike, right? But when it comes to, uh, pay, we're talking about, which we know you're championing. You know, let's say that doesn't get addressed and, and the teachers decide, well, you know what, uh, we're going to go on strike.
Florida's a right to work state right now, so teachers can't really strike. It doesn't work that way. And I am supportive of a teacher's right to strike. That's something that I think they should be able to do. It's unfortunate if they should ever feel the need to, but I believe that's something they should be able to do. But unfortunately with where Florida is kind of right now, I don't ever foresee it happening. Um, so as far as a plan, I don't foresee us needing one necessarily, if that makes sense.
Yeah, yeah. Cause bye.
Yeah.
You're going to strike, bye.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're done. When we, we've talked about that in a, in the context of working for Disney once upon a time. Um, that the, the union really has no bargaining power in a right to work state.
Um, very little.
Because, I, I mean, we had a contract, go down a side street again. We had a contract that, uh, the union negotiated. It came back to us and they said, here's what Disney is offering. Vote no, we can do better. Right? Now, part of that offer was if you pass this contract on the first round, you'll get a $500 bonus or whatever it was.
Right.
Um, but if you don't pass it, when we go to the next offer, that bonus is gone. That bonus is gone.
So they were essentially bribing your vote.
Oh yeah, definitely. And the union said, vote no. Vote no, we can do better. So we all went in and voted no. And the union went back to the table, came back to us with the exact same offer.
Without the bonus.
And said, this is the best we can do.
Yeah.
We're, we're going to have to. So.
Wow.
At that point, like, right? Even if you wanted to turn around and go, oh yeah, well, we just won't show up to work tomorrow. It doesn't work like that in a right to work state. And, and that's, that, that frustrates me because you, you lose a little of that leverage that you can use against the company when they're not, you know, handling things right.
Victoria wants to know if you would support teachers unionizing.
Yes. Well, we have, we have a teacher's union. Uh, we have the Florida Education Association. And then we have a, a subset of that in Polk County called the Polk Education Association. I'm very supportive of our teacher unions.
Um, okay, we've, uh, we follow, speaking of controversial, on the show, we, we follow a lot of, uh, church state issues from local to national.
Okay.
Uh, what do you think where, where does religious belief fit in when it comes to the public schools?
When it comes to public school, I see religion is very much so pertaining to its interaction with history. And understanding religion as it contributes to where we are today, who we are as a society, where we've been, why some of the decisions in history have been made. Because a lot of the driving factors in history were God, gold and glory. And we have to understand all of those things and that includes God. And that means studying the different religions of the world.
Yes.
But that means the different religions of the world, not just any one particular.
Yep.
I, I feel like we should be having, uh, a, a well-rounded conversation about those religions, which for the most part, we are. In, in the world history classes that I've experienced and my fellow students have experienced, we're doing a really great job right now of, of teaching how each of the religions interact with one another historically and today. And, and how that interacts with how events have, you know, happened. But that's kind of where I see religion's place in, you know, our school system.
Um, I don't know if you've studied this or not, but I, being a legal head, I think you would appreciate reading some of this legislation if you haven't. So the Congressional Prayer Caucus Foundation has made ready to file legislation templates for states to file. Um, the entire effort is called Project Blitz. And I'm planning on working on a full episode for this, but it also may, uh, late breaking announcement. I also may be doing that with John on the Wayward Willis.
Oh, that'll be fun.
Stay tuned. Um, so Project Blitz is, its stated purpose is to, quote, "Protect the free exercise of traditional Judeo-Christian religious values and beliefs in the public square. And to reclaim and properly define the narrative which supports such beliefs," end quote. So, so even in their own declaration, free exercise of religion to them means only Christians.
But what does the legislation actually provide for? That's what I'm interested in knowing.
So the very first kind of, uh, the first level of their approach to this is they want to pass some low hanging fruit.
Okay.
Right? Um, "In God We Trust" has been our national motto.
Which was just passed in, yeah, Florida Legislature after Parkland.
Yep. So that, that phrase has been our national motto since we panicked during the cold, during the Cold War. Uh, and put God into everything. It wasn't prior to the 50s.
Correct.
Um, and, and our previous, we are supporters of the, uh, original motto project that wants to bring us back to e Pluribus Unum, out of many one, which is more representative of what we are as Americans than, uh, "In God We Trust." Um, and so "In God We Trust" has been ruled by the courts to be more traditional than religious.
Correct.
Even though, when you talk to these people, they will tell you out of one side of their mouth, this is not about our, you know, this is just a traditional thing. It's not about God. And then out of the other side of their mouth, they say, it's my God. Yeah, it's, yeah, it's specifically, uh, Christian values. So, uh, the "In God We Trust" thing, what did you think about that? Was that a, did we need that?
Um, I don't think.
Putting it on the schools specifically, I mean?
So what's interesting is, uh, when the Florida Legislature passed this particular piece of legislation, it did go through our Florida Legislature. Uh, the, uh, I forget if it was a representative or a senator, but the person spearheading the legislation said that, "In light of Parkland, we need to bring the light of God into our schools essentially." And that that would stop school shootings. I think that kind of claim is ludicrous, inaccurate, misleading and appalling. Just to throw out, uh, a few, you know, descriptors there. Um, but that also, it's kind of a waste of time and money because they spent so much time debating this on the House and Senate floor. That could have been spent towards, I don't know, maybe specifying some more in the Marjorie Stoneman Douglas Safety Act.
Yes.
Um, that, that maybe could have been spent debating different portions of that. They spent so much time, you know, on that incredibly controversial issue because it is controversial. You know, instead of actual productivity. So I think it's a way that we're bogging down our legislative process.
Yep.
Uh, first and foremost. And, and I also think that, you know, the money that it takes to put "In God We Trust" on every school building in, you know, the state isn't really worth it because, you know, the impact that it actually has is, no.
Lynn, let's go back to our, our debt figure, right? Oh, no, I'm sorry. We can't afford $2,000 for signs or however much it is.
This is again, going back to the, I'm a broke college student. We can't afford to spend money on wasteful things like, you know, like this. And this is, you know, looking line by line in the budget. This is something that, you know, if this was an initiative by the school board, I absolutely would say, no, absolutely not. This is a waste of money first and foremost.
Right.
Not anything to do with religion or what have you, but simply put, it's a waste of time and money.
Use that money somewhere else.
Towards textbooks, think, you know, we could, we could, you know, maybe instead of.
Better resourced.
In, in my AP Environmental Science class, my Advanced Placement Environmental Science class, our textbooks were over 10 years old. And, and they're not supposed to be according to col- to the college board. In order to pass those tests, we have to have a textbook within the last 10 years. But they were 12 years old. And, you know, imagine if we're spending money on "In God We Trust," we're not spending money replacing those textbooks.
Yep. And for me, it's about the, the demonstrability, right? If you can demonstrate to me that putting that sign up there is going to reduce school shootings, before we do it, right? You have to prove to me first that, that it will make a difference. Then I might go somewhere with you.
Yeah.
But, but we have zero evidence that it's going to do any damn bit of that.
I don't necessarily see how you could. I mean, the only way that you could really prove it is take a school district, put it on all of the buildings and then say, "Oh, we haven't had any school shootings in this district. It must be, you know."
Right.
Yeah, but then, but then you're going to have the other people to go, okay, how many other school districts in the country don't have that and haven't had?
Right.
Right. There's no, there's no way to prove it or not.
Yeah.
Um, so here's another piece. Florida passed a law last year, uh, that was pushed. Um, so here's another piece. Florida passed a law last year, uh, that was pushed by Florida Citizens Alliance, which is a conservative group that fought unsuccessfully to stop Florida from signing on to common core standards. Uh, this new law allows parents or any residents to challenge the use of textbooks and instructional materials they find objectable via an independent hearing. Among a number of things the FCA was concerned with, including history books that present America as a democracy instead of a constitutional republic. Splitting hairs a little bit there. Uh, they're concerned with evolution and climate change. The group's founder claims that creationism and Darwinism are both simple theories, which misunderstands the way science defines the word theory. Uh, Sarah Talk listener Mara asked, uh, "Do you support teaching creation in public schools uh, alongside and with equal weight to evolution and scientific understandings of the universe?"
Not alongside, not with equal weight. If you want to say this is a theory that does exist, take it as you will. That's sure. Okay. That's different to me than, than say, teaching it as holding the exact same weight. Because realistically, scientifically it, it doesn't and we have to address that fact. But if you want to say it exists, I don't have a problem with that. As far as challenging textbooks, let's put it this way. I've taken a lot of advanced placement science classes and that would be incredibly harmful to that learning environment. Much less any of, of the other ones, you know? Take, take biology, for instance. In order to graduate high school, you have to pass a biology and of course exam that's mandated at the state level. Um, so that's not something the district controls, but textbooks we do have some influence over, et cetera, you know? And so if somebody goes to challenge one of our textbook decisions, um, that's a little bit of a problem because we chose that textbook because it meets the criteria of the test.
Right.
You know, if you expect us to use something else, it might not meet the criteria of that test. And if you're objecting to something that's in that textbook, guess what? That might actually be on the test. So really you should take it up with the state.
Yeah.
Because that's your real problem. And, and as far as with advanced placement classes, if we're, you know, throwing out, you know, the current science textbooks that we have, we might not meet the national standards that advanced placement courses require. And that would be a shame because if we can't meet those standards, we can't have those classes. And then our students are losing out on the opportunity to get ahead in their college education if that's what they want to do. So I see this as harmful on a multiple, you know, multiple levels.
Just as a, a, a basic, uh, point, I, when I, when I look at people that are like, I want to be able to go to the school and challenge what you're teaching. Um, and will you, let's use the.
My first question is, do you know what they're teaching?
Well, let's use the creation, evolution, uh, which is by the way, not even the same either, right? Because evolution doesn't say how the universe was created.
Right.
At all. Evolution says nothing about that.
And, and many people I know believe in some type of mix of those theories, you know?
So if, if the, if you're, you're going to come in and argue that they are the same and equal, where were you on, uh, science, fourth grade, science class day, whatever? When they taught you the difference between a theory and a hypothesis, right? Because your hypothesis is God created the universe. You can't demonstrate that to me. There's, there's no way to prove that.
Or disprove it, to be fair.
Right? Uh, which is why I take an agnostic atheist position. However, we can demonstrate that evolution is happening and has been happening. And then you write your study and then scientists from all over the world take it and pick it apart and retest your, your, check your observations against their own and, and build this massive body of evidence, which once all of those things point to the same answer, we go, okay, that's probably the best explanation that we have right now. That's what we call a theory. And, and that's the closest to fact that we have at the moment. Which is not the same as the hypothesis.
Nor is it the same thing as pure fact either, to be clear.
Sure. Yeah. We could, our understanding of evolution could change tomorrow. Somebody could come up with, uh, some other explanation and then the scientists go out and they do what they do and they test that and they poke it and prod it and, uh,
And they find it's actually viable.
And they find out, oh, you know what? Maybe our understanding of the universe has been wrong all this time and maybe there's another thing. Um, okay. So we're wrapping up here. I could, I could go on for that forever.
I have, I have two things.
I have like one more question. Go ahead.
No, no, I want the final question.
Okay, fine. Um, okay. All right. We talked about the instructional materials, Bill. Um, no, actually that was it. That was the last one.
Okay. So Dan says, "Holy crap. We've grilled Kayla for 90 minutes and she's been effing amazing. She's ready."
Thank you, Dan.
Then he also says, "Question, once you've served on the school board and you will, what is your long-term political goal? Where do you see yourself in 10 years?"
Thanks, Dan, for that question. And, and thanks, Dan, for seeing that that's a distinct possibility. I appreciate that. Um, my, my eventual goal is probably to run for a state house or senate. Um, because I'm, I'm incredibly passionate about legislation. I'm incredibly passionate about education. And, you know, I, I'd like to see us get more involved at the legislative level as a school, as a school board and as a school district. And, and so, you know, I, I definitely see myself eventually running for the state house or senate. Maybe, you know, unsuccessfully, who knows, but it's definitely something in the works. And I definitely have plans to go to law school one day as well. So.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Was that it?
Um, Victoria also says that you are amazing.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Victoria. Um, and if you guys would like to learn any more information about myself or my campaign, please feel free to visit my website. It's kailatetter.com. That's K-A-L-A-T-E-D-D-E-R.com.
Awesome. Um, I, I will pitch two coming up. If you're, if you're, if education is an important thing to you.
Yeah.
Um, we have another interview coming up with, uh, Cheryl Cohn, who is running for a state seat in Lake County.
Okay.
Um, we're going to talk to her. I think we're going to pre-record that next Saturday. Uh, next Saturday morning, we're going to talk to her. Um, but, uh, half of her platform is, is in education.
Awesome.
Uh, yeah.
I love to see that. And if she should win her seat in Lake County, maybe that's a state rep that we could, you know, that we could end up working with and getting some legislation through.
Absolutely. Yeah, definitely. Um, all right. Well, we covered a lot of ground. Uh, thank you for.
Established that Kayla is awesome.
Uh, I have very little doubt now. Um, I had very little doubt the first time we met.
Yeah.
Um, so, uh, I appreciate you coming down here and, and, uh, being patient with us while we sorted out the, the technology in the beginning.
It was, it was well worth the wait.
Good. I'm glad. I hope this.
We feel that too.
Yeah. I hope, I hope this will, you know, uh, give you something for, you know, people to check out. And, uh, again, like I said during the break, I really liked this long form interview thing because we can really dig in and find out, you know, it's so much better.
For 90 minutes.
Yeah, exactly. It's so much better than the, the minute and a half answers. I, I like it.
And those always get so canned.
Yeah. Yeah, they do. Yeah. You watch one forum and then you watch the next forum and you're like, okay, I've heard this before.
You'll be happy to know Sarah does very little editing on these.
Um, all right. So I'll give you the final word. Is there anything we missed? Or if you, uh, want to put a, a summary to, to pin it up, why, why should we put Kayla Tedder on the school board? If it's not already obvious.
If it's, if it's not already obvious why we should put Kayla Tedder on the school board, you know, think about my platform. My platform is students first for a reason. I have it on the shirt. I don't know if you can see it.
Yep.
But, uh, my platform is students first for a reason. We need the student representation on the school board. We need to counter the bureaucracy that we have and our standardized testing crisis and provide our students with the safety and mental health support that they need, but that's only going to happen if we have a real advocate for them.
Yes. Awesome. Uh, Kayla, again, thank you for coming in. Appreciate it so much.
Thank you so much, guys. And again, please feel free to visit my website. I could always use your support if you're willing to donate or if you live in the area and would like to volunteer. And don't forget, if you live in Polk, go vote. And if you don't live in Polk, go vote.
Everyone, go vote.
Everyone, go vote. Preferably for me if you can.
All right. Kayla Tedder, candidate for Polk County School Board. Again, uh, thank you for coming on the show. We want to thank everyone listening, uh, for, again, man, everybody for putting up with our technology problems tonight. And, uh, so those of you who found their way to the YouTube, uh, we appreciate that. And, uh, for all of our wonderful patrons over at patreon.com/sarahtalk. Uh, we definitely want to thank them for supporting us financially for all of the things that we do. Uh, we couldn't do it without you. Uh, next week there'll be some more things and then the week after that there'll be even more things. And we'll see you next week. You've been listening to Sarah Talk.
Sarah Talk is made possible by listener support. Visit patreon.com/sarahtalk to become a patron and help keep this program going. Contact Sarah and company by email at producer@sarahtalk.com or call 224-40-SARA. That's 224-407-2724. And follow us on social media, facebook.com/sarahtalkradio and on Twitter, @sarahtalkradio.